2014 Annual Annual Budget Hearing.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations? And I'll ask again, any other nominations? Seeing none. We don't need a second for a nomination, though. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Ann. The first thing I want to point out about item D, actually, is that the minutes from last year's meeting are available in your booklet on pages eight and nine. And then, as we proceed through the meeting, suggested wording for motions, because some of these involve dollar figures, it's nice to be able to read them, are on page five in the booklet, right after the agenda piece. The next item, then, is the superintendent's report. Dr. Wilson?
Okay. We're going to give this a go without the mic, and I can put it on if I need to speak up. Welcome, everyone, and I would like to spend a few minutes and talk about some of our key, not only initiatives, but, you know, what is really the state of the district at this point, and what are our focal points moving forward to the upcoming school year. And we started by, you know, showing you our vision and mission, and that's such an important statement, because everything that we do, we talk about our continuous improvement work, is driven by those vision and mission statements. This was adopted in 2011, prior to the adoption of our last strategic plan, and those words, I think, really ring true as we move forward. And when we look at those statements, these four key components are really what drive our work, that we're looking to build positive relationships, working together in a collaborative nature, providing a safe and healthy environment, and then using resources efficiently and effectively. And so, the things that are going to be presented this evening with regard to budget, which drives our continuous improvement, all are developed under those key points. And our continuous improvement plan, again, when we look at our academic achievement, is really driven by this strategy of looking at the mission and vision, creating our strategic plan. Now, our strategic plan was meant to be a three-year plan to run from 2011 to 2014. We're actually in the fourth year of our strategic plan. We're extending it for another year. I'll talk in a moment about our process for developing an updated plan for the future. And then, with that district plan, each of our schools have school improvement plans that they implement in Plan Do Study Act cycles that we do annually. And we look at those strategic goals that are part of that plan, five key areas are part of our work. Increasing student achievement, and that will always be part of any plan, but what changes with it are the specific, you know, data that we're looking at and the areas of focus, but of course, that's why we're here. It's all about student achievement. Closing equity gaps, it's absolutely a focus of the district and will remain that, a focus moving forward, and we've put a lot of action plans in place. Again, something we monitor closely. We're not where we need to be yet, but we feel that we definitely have a good foundation in our work moving forward. Increasing efficiency, again, you'll hear a little bit about that with the budget, but that's an important thing, that if we increase efficiency and make sure that every dollar available goes into the classroom and to instruction is what is real key. Climate. And by having a positive climate for our employees, that also means a safe and positive climate for our students, and that's a key piece, again, of our plan. And then, lastly, the aligning our professional development. It's just, everything that we do, we're always in the continuous improvement mode, and so, in the idea of not standing still, professional development is huge. And the center that we're in this evening is something that gets used on a regular basis by our staff and continually out over in the summer throughout the school years, something that I think is a pride of the district and the places, things that we have in place for our staff. A little bit of demographic information about our student population. Last year's official student count, thirty-two oh one. We're still in the process of finalizing our fall numbers. Will be a slight increase again this fall. But the one thing that's an important figure is looking at the number of students that we have that are economically disadvantaged. You see a steady increase over the last ten years. It started to stabilize now the last couple, but we do know that that presents unique challenges for students that do live in poverty, and that's, again, part of our focus, when we're looking at the idea of educating all students. Another demographic we look at is the race and ethnicity of our students, and again, you see that there's quite a change over the last ten years. It's starting to steady now the last couple of years. In fact, we didn't have much of a change at all over the previous two, but approximately eighty-five percent of our population is white, and then approximately, again, sixteen percent of other. Of the non-white populations, we have a fairly equal mix between African-American students, Asian students, and Latino students. And we know that, you know, when we look at, you know, culturally responsive practices, it's not a one-size-fits-all, and it's looking at all students as individual, and, you know, regardless of the race or ethnicity, even, you know, the white students all have different backgrounds, and so that's really the key when we look at that instruction, is the idea of personalized learning and getting, building relationships with all students and understanding where they're at. And I won't go through each of these bullet points, but again, when we talk about the continuous improvement plan, these are our critical components that we look at in deriving those action plans. All right, looking at big picture, and what is going on in the state, and how does that relate to what we're doing here at Manona Grove? DPI has had something in place for about the past five years, they called the Agenda 2017, where they had specific goals in their strategic plan to have reached some accomplishments, you know, by that time. And there, the overriding thing, again, is part of that goal is every child to graduate, college, and career-ready. And so, in those four areas, there's specific things that state has put together as initiatives, and then they certainly, we implement them at the local level. So, for the upcoming school year, there's really three key pieces of that plan that we're implementing at the local level. The first piece with standards and instruction and the Common Core standards, this has been an ongoing process for really about the last five years. And so, it's not anything that's just being implemented in our district this year, it's been a gradual process, as we're always continually reviewing our curriculum and standards. The major new resources that we have this year is in our literacy program, and a reading program for our elementary agents. Certainly are aligned with the Common Core, but it's much deeper than that. It's really the basis of everything we do in our literacy, and really, it's just the resource that we use to in the curriculum to teach those standards. The second piece, the assessments and data systems, the smarter balanced assessments replaced what was the WKCE for math and English language arts. What I don't have on the slide is that the secondary level, the ASPIRE program is, or assessments are what's used at the high school, that includes the ACT suite. You may be aware that the Manona Grove District has had all juniors take the ACT for the last, I believe, with six, seven years, and now statewide, all school districts will be doing the same. And so, it's something that we've had in place. There are some slight changes to the freshman sophomore testing part of the ASPIRE, but it's very similar to what we've done in the past with Explore and Plan. We also give those assessments at the middle school level, and then we have a lot of local assessments in addition that we use for our formative assessments of students. And then, the last piece, the school and educator effectiveness. Educator effectiveness is really the teacher evaluation, teacher and principal evaluation system. And so, that's a statewide initiative. Most school districts are choosing one of two systems. We're using the DPI model, which is the Danielson model. That is the model the district has used for many years, and so, the criteria in which we evaluate our staff hasn't changed. The process has changed quite a bit. It's all electronic, but it really fits nicely into the work that we've done in the past. So, for our district, it's not a major transition like it is in many districts, and it's something that we feel very well-prepared, and the idea of getting the evaluation with that is to help promote that effectiveness and using that as a tool to help our teachers and principals grow, which has always been the main goal of our evaluation process. So, those are things that are happening at the state level that we also are implementing here locally. Then, outside of that, we have several other things that we're working on in the district. Two pieces that we worked on the previous year that we're looking at implementation beginning this year. The first thing, communication plan, is something that we finalized, and it's still a working document as we move forward. One of the things that you receive tonight as a handout is an annual report. That's one small piece that's a little bit different format, something new this year, in trying to look at other ways of how can we communicate to our community, in addition to our parents, about the things that we're doing in the district, things that are important to our community members, and so, we're looking at, again, a number of different ways of doing those communications. And that printed annual report, that'll be available electronically as well, that we'll try to push out to as many community members as possible. That's one small piece. But really, the goal is to try to improve both our internal and external communications to make sure that all of our stakeholders are getting relevant, you know, information that we need, that they need to know about the district. The second piece that is in the process of new implementation is our updated technology plan, and that was something that we just, it'll be a three-year plan, and the key pieces of that, we have an excellent infrastructure with our technology. That was something that was part of our old plan that was implemented over the past year. We're very fortunate to be in the Madison area, part of the Muffin Network, and we now have, you know, direct fiber out to our Cottage Grove schools as well from Manona, so we're all connected. So, on the infrastructure, we're in great shape. We have the wireless connectivity in every classroom in every building, and so, now the key is having the devices that we can use to enhance learning. And what we've looked at, we do not have a true one-to-one initiative in that we're going to give every student in the district the same device and say, we're going to base our curriculum and use, you know, off of that. We have several different devices that we're using. Learning pads are the primary thing being used at the lower elementary grades. We have Chromebooks that are being used. We have iPads that staff had initially that also some student used, and the idea is to find the technology that fit the needs of the students and their learning styles. What we do want to make sure is that's accessible at all times, with the idea that anywhere, anytime access. And so, along with that, as the district's purchasing technology, we also want to encourage the use of, the students to be able to use their own technology, with the idea of the bring-your-own-device. Again, that, we talk about that professional development, a lot of that is training with teachers, that if you have students bringing several different devices in the classroom, how can you utilize those effectively, you know, with the work that you're doing? So, that's an ongoing process, it's constantly evolving, but we don't want to lock ourselves into a single device that may not be the best one for learning, you know, a few years down the road. So, the idea is having access. We're not to the point that we're looking at distributing a device for a student to, you know, have with them a hundred percent of the time, that the device is available here. However, we have made them available for students that can take them home if they don't have that access at home. We also have mobile hotspots that are part of our network that are filtered, that students can check out, take home as well if they don't have broadband access at home. So, the idea is to try to, number one, give the access to the students who don't necessarily have it, but then, secondly, the device that they need that will enhance their learning. And that's all there is, is a tool to help us enhance what we're already trying to do. Something we're very excited about and feel that we're really moving in the right direction with our technology. And then, some key things that we're going to be under development this upcoming school year. I mentioned the strategic plan. We have, we're in the process of extending this to the fourth year. We will be starting to write our new strategic plan after the first of the year to be implemented in the fall of 2015. I would expect that to be another three-year plan. We'll build upon the work that we've already done, and then look to, you know, make the adjustments that we need moving forward. Long-range facilities plan is another very important topic. We're in the process of completing an enrollment study for the district. That report will be finished here in the next couple of weeks. We'll be presenting to the Board of Education at that time, and we're going to need to start looking at our long-range planning of our facilities based upon enrollment. We are seeing steady growth. Fortunately, it's at a pace right now that we can handle, it's not coming too quickly, but we definitely are going to have to look at our facility needs, and it's, you know, we're certainly in a unique situation, again, between the schools that we have in the Cottage Grove community, as well as the Manona, and how that will play out in the future to handle the population that we project. But we will be looking at putting together a long-range plan and getting ahead of it, so we don't have to worry about any real quick, short-term, you know, solutions. That's certainly, we talk back to, we talk about communication, clearly, a very important item that the entire community, you know, everyone is a stakeholder in that, and so, that'll be a real key piece that we communicate that along the way. School calendar. The reason we have this on the list, a year ago, there was new legislation that eliminated the one-hundred-and-eighty-day requirement of instruction. Now, in our district, we've had waivers for our elementary schools for the last several years to provide some professional development days for our teachers, so we actually only have school, students in session, one-hundred-and-seventy-five days at the elementary, one-hundred-and-seventy-nine days at the middle school, we're still at one-hundred-and-eighty days at the high school. So, we won't necessarily be making a change, but it's an opportunity for us to reevaluate what is the best way to balance that need for professional development for our staff with regard to making sure that we have the learning time that we need for our students. And along with that, the, you know, length of the school day, when are those professional development days? Are they all day, taking time off, half-days? Certainly, convenience of parents and students have to come into play, so it's just something that we're going to reevaluate. May or may not be changes to past calendars, but it's an opportunity to give us a little more flexibility if we think we might need to go a little bit different direction. The budget process. Well, of course, we do the budget annually, but one of the things that when we look at how we develop, we are going to make some adjustments internally about how we develop our budgets at district and building level, to make sure, again, that every dollar is being utilized, you know, to its maximum towards student instruction. So, you won't see, I think, a major change when you look at the overall budget as taxpayers, but internally, the process that we're putting in place, we're going to look at some adjustments with that. And then, lastly, this is a very important piece, employee compensation plans. Well over seventy percent, approaching eighty percent of our budget is on, you know, human resources, the staff that we employ, not only teachers, but our support staff as well. And so, there's been some dramatic changes to compensation for public employees since Act X with regard to benefit levels, and so, it's an opportunity for us to revisit how we compensate employees and to make sure, again, the goal is to attract and retain, you know, quality staff. And so, we have a committee that's been working almost a year now on a teacher compensation plan. We'd like to be wrapping up that work within, hopefully, the next few months to have implemented for the fifteen, sixteen school year. We'll also be looking at our support staff compensation, and of course, always reevaluating our benefit levels as well. Teacher retirement plans is another work that we've had a committee do work on, that there'll be, there'll be a proposal coming to the board in the very near future on that as well. So, that's a key piece. We are, again, when we get to the budget piece, you'll see that we have fixed dollars available. It's a matter of making sure we're using those to the maximum that we can. Again, it is, we keep saying this phrase over and over again, but it's so important, attract and retain quality employees, to make sure that we have a fair compensation system to help us do that. We all know that to have that quality staff, there's a lot more to it than just the compensation. This needs to be a quality work environment, it's going to be a place that teachers and staff want to be. I think we have that, but we can't take that for granted, so the climate is a big part of that as well, but the compensation can't be a hindrance. Okay, so with that, those are, again, the highlights, I think, are the things that we're working on in the upcoming year, and before we move on, I guess I would take an opportunity if there are any questions or anything that I reported on. Okay, thank you. And next up is our audit report from our Board Treasurer, Susan Manning.
Actually, I'm going to put it in just for a minute. No, that's okay. I feel I was a little remiss in the beginning. I would like to introduce all the board members, actually, and people at this table as well. So, Susan is our treasurer, and she'll be up next, and then Jessica Ace, Vice President, Lionel Norton is our clerk, and Jeff Simpson and Dean Bowles. Peter Sobel is traveling and unable to make it tonight. And over here, to, on Dan's left, actually, we have Mike Gilke as our attorney with Boardman and Clark, and he's here to serve as a parliamentarian this evening. And then Jared Rosing, you'll be hearing from shortly, is our Business Services Director, for those of you who might not know those people. So, with that, Susan?
All of a sudden, you come out, you get up here, and you look out in the audience, and you say, oh, my gosh, these are your neighbors, and they're here tonight, and so, that's really great, and I'm really glad you're here, and that really makes us feel good to know that you're here and you're reading the report and watching Jared's PowerPoint, which is always extremely well-done, and ask him questions as you follow it, because he's very open to that. So, my report tonight is included on pages ten and eleven, and if you see, we are finally moving, we're in an era right now, and I want you to be clearly aware of that, that in the last three years, we were cutting a million dollars from our budget to try and maintain staffing and salaries and administration, and we worked very hard during that time period to kind of get where we are now, and we're relatively stable with our population increasing and with our tax base. So, it's nice to look at those two pages and kind of see positive numbers coming out of that, and as you look, you will see that those numbers look pretty positive. At least they're even, which is nice rather than negative. The completed audit report will be presented to the board in February of 2015. They start the audit, but it isn't completed until later by Wagner CPAs, and is really my privilege to introduce Director of Business Services Jared Rosing, who will now present the budget information tonight. And thank you again all very much for coming. And just for fun, I just found out that Mike Gilke, our parliamentarian's son, had twins, so he's, isn't that fun? He's going to be so embarrassed, but that's half the fun of being in this community is sharing your good news. So, sorry, Mike, that's what we do.
My name is Jared Rosing, and I'm the Director of Business Services, and my portion of tonight's annual meeting is the budget, one of the most important parts of our district. I would just like to let everybody know that there is a handout. It is the one that is blue. There is information in there that will also go over our budget a little bit more detail. The purpose of my presentation is to walk through and give you an overview. The Board of Education will actually vote on the final budget at the end of October. We're still waiting for final numbers from the state, such as our state aid. We've had our third Friday count, those numbers are being reconciled as we speak, and then today, our property values came out. So, you know, this budget is a preliminary budget that was presented to the board back in June, since our fiscal year starts on July one. And so, if I could ask, if you could hold the questions sitting into my presentation, I'd be more than happy to answer any of those questions, but like I said, this will be a pretty overview of the district and a walk-through how we go through the budgeting and where money's at and what we're using money for. So, just a little background about our district. Our district is made up of a number of municipalities, and as you can see, I've listed this out based on our current valuations. The city of Manona has about fifty-three and a half percent of the property valuation, and it's followed by the Village of Cottage Grove, Town of Cottage Grove, and then we do have three smaller municipalities, the Town of Bluebun Grove, Sun Prairie, and the City of Madison. We're anticipating an increase of about one percent in valuations for this year, and how that really affects everybody in this room. It doesn't give us additional funding for the district, and what it does, it has the ultimate, finds out what happens on our property taxes based on our total expenditures and spreading over our property value. So, as you can see, over the course of our, the history here, you can see where we had the economic downturn, and so, we're still slowly climbing, coming back from that. And so, like I had said, this, 2014, those numbers come out today, I'm sure sitting in our mailbox, but due to the fact that we needed to get this published, we're using estimates so we can be consistent throughout the presentation. The district is made up of a number of buildings, and we have three elementary schools. Two of those are located in Cottage Grove, one here in Manona. Our middle school is located in Cottage Grove, which is called Glacial Drumland, our high school here in Manona. This building here is classified as our district office. We also house our MG twenty-one, our charter school, and we also rent out some classrooms to Dane County School to work, which is a consortium through Dane County with a number of school districts. We, some other buildings that we currently do not occupy, however, we're leasing to Madison School District, and we have been able to partner with them to offer a dual emergent language program for our elementary students, and that's our Maywood Elementary, and then we do have three vacant resident houses that are located up by the high school. So, this here shows, over the course of a number of years, of our resident students, and our resident students is what we actually can really base our revenue limits on. Our revenue limits is something I'll talk a little bit about later. However, it's how we sort of develop our revenue that we can collect through property taxes and state aid. When we talk about residents, our K through twelve students are counted as a one, and our 4K students are counted as a point-six. So, when you see this, this is not a head count, but we're anticipating FTEs, about twenty-nine hundred students, which is, you know, a little increase, and we had a fairly large increase when we started our 4K program. However, then we saw that decrease, but then we're starting to see some resident growth come back. One of the things that we have, over the time, been able to do, when we saw the decrease in our residents, is we've been able to fill in some of those seats with open enrollment. We're definitely a school district where individuals really, really want to come in, so we have to limit the number of individuals coming in, but as we do that, we also have to keep in mind our residents and making sure of the capacity of our building. So, each January, the Board of Education must go through a process of selecting a number of seats that we're going to open up, and then during the open enrollment period, we go through, people apply, and then back in May and June, we accept those students. That also goes back to a point that the superintendent had talked about, is why is it important that we do an enrollment study? Obviously, as we're seeing more subdivisions, apartment complexes go up in our school district, we also need to know that if we have planned a number of residents coming in, we don't want to be accepting new open enrollment students because we're going to find an issue with our building capacity. This here is actually a number of students that are sitting in our seats. These would include all resident and open enrollment students, so we're at about just three thousand two hundred and fifty-nine students is what we're anticipating for this year. And you might have seen, you know, we're, October first, we've been in school for a month, you'd think, well, why don't we know that number for sure? We know the number, but we also have a point where students are leaving us and coming in, and the third Friday is that official count date, and if student doesn't show up on the third Friday and they were open enrollment, we do have the ability to go to a waiting list, so we do have a lot of movement, and that's what our office does, is that we go through and verify that everybody's been counted and that we're claiming the right amount to the Department of Public Instruction. Public school funding is a little complicated. It's not as, okay, this is the number of students that we're getting, and we're going to get this flat rate from the state, and then we can just move on and collect more additional funds if we need it, because we have great programming going on. There's really two major sources of funding that the school district receives. It's through property taxes and local state aid. They're counterbalancing, so if we receive more state aid, the property tax decreases, but if we receive less state aid, then your property taxes increase. What we do is we go, we walk through a process called a revenue limit worksheet, which takes into the number of enrollment students, our property values, and our state aid, and it gives us a total amount that we can collect. We're not allowed to exceed that amount unless we go out for referendum, and then that's when our referendum will have to pass in order for the district to exceed that. Things that are outside of that would be things that, such as debt service. So, when we went through a referendum and approved building a building, that debt service has been, is outside of our revenue limit for our educational programming, and that's something that goes on to the tax rule as well. So, what happened with revenue limits is back in 1993, those were established, and it was really established to sort of help control property taxes. Prior to that, the annual meeting was the area where our lecturers came together, the district presented their budget, and each year it might have changed, and our lecturer would vote on that and approve it, and then that's what our school budget became. Well, when revenue limits came in play, they pretty much set the maximum a school district can really collect in revenue. We do collect through student fees, and we do collect through open enrollment, but you'll see the graph later, that's not the majority of where our revenue comes from. So, when we're developing our budget, we're really focusing on what's our enrollment going to look like, what's the revenue going to look like, how much money is going to increase on the revenue? So, for example, in the past, we had between two-hundred, two-hundred-and-seventy-five-dollar increase each year per pupil. Two, three years ago, four years ago, it actually decreased by five-point-five percent, so we went backwards by five-hundred dollars per pupil, and then the last two years in the budget, we've seen a seventy-five-dollar increase. So, we're not back to the point where we were at prior to the major reductions that happened to school education finance. So, it fluctuates based on our enrollment and our state aid. We are in our second year of the state budget, which means for all school districts, we know that our revenue limit's going to be increased by seventy-five dollars. Next year will be a new state budget, and depending on what happens, we might have a state budget in place, we might not, and so, always the first year of a state budget makes it a little challenging for a school district to try to determine what are we really going to get on the resident side of things. However, what we are in the second one, so we're anticipating... However, what we are in the second one, so we're anticipating, we're gonna get $75 per resident student increase. So state aid, so the state aid is certified by the Department of Public Instruction. And those really are based on numbers from last year's expenditures. All school districts report that to the Department of Public Construction, and based on the amount of money that was set aside in the state budget. It goes through a very complicated formula that does incorporate student enrollment. But there are three tiers of funding. There's the primary, secondary, and there's tertiary. We are a district where the concept of state aid is equalization. The point of it was that we wanna give every school district in the state of Wisconsin's fair funding. Well, we're a negatively district, which means that the formula looks at us as a district that has a lot of property value for the number of students. So once we get to a certain threshold, for each dollar that we spend, the state takes a little bit away in state aid, and then it gets passed along to property taxes. So you can see here on the graph, obviously, over the number of years, we've definitely seen a decrease in our state aid. We are anticipating a small increase for this year. However, that number will not be published until October 15th. So this is just an estimate. And the reason that we're not able to really put it through a formula is because all the expenditures in the state of Wisconsin have to go into this formula. So if we have school districts that are spending less than what they had reported, we might get a larger increase. If we have school districts that are spending more, when they go through the shared expenditure side of things, this could be a little less. So what our budget consists with, you know, for the most part, each school district's budget is pretty much the same with the base of funds. The funds are set up by the Department of Public Construction. The district doesn't have the ability to say, well, Fund 10, we're gonna put everything in, and Fund 27, we're gonna put some things in. So I just wanna walk through quickly how our budget is set up, so as we walk through each of those, you'll have an idea. Our general fund, which is our largest funds, is our Fund 10. And that's where a majority of our operation costs, our general education, our regular education, pretty much the entire operation except for special education that is pulled out. So when we talk about state equalization aid, this is where that goes. If we're talking about a first grade classroom salary, that's where this would go. The second one is called Special Projects Fund. This is our Fund 21, Fund 27. It's pretty unique that they combined the two of them, because Fund 21 is our grants or our gifts that the district receives, and Fund 27 is our special education fund. So everything that deals with a student with special education, an IEP, we have to code to Fund 27. We're aided there at a much different rate than we're aided on the general side. Currently, we're looking at about 26% of each dollar that we spend, we get back in state aid for special education. That's long away from that two-thirds funding concept. So pretty much you think about, if we have a budget of $5 million, we're only getting above 26 cents per dollar on that $5 million. Debt service fund, there are two types of debt services that we have. We have Fund 38, which is debt that is initiated by the district. There's no requirement to go out for a referendum for that. This is where you'll see some of our energy efficiencies. We've done three energy efficiency phases since we've been here. Those debt services fall into Fund 38s. Fund 39 would be a referendum approved debt. That is when I talk about going out for a referendum to be approved to build a new building, to some of those capital things that have to be approved by the referendum. Capital projects fund, so Fund 40. So whenever we do a capital project, all the expenditures and revenues must be accounted for there. So when we've done our Phase 1, our Phase 2, and our Phase 3, we account for that there. We're transferring money from either the Fund 39 over to pay for that. So we're accounting for it in Fund 39 as the debt service. But then we transfer the revenue over to Fund 40 if that's an ongoing project. But once the debt's secured and the project's done, then everything's pushed back to Fund 39. If it's something that comes out of Fund 10, then we transfer revenues from Fund 10 over to Fund 40 to pay for those. But DPI wants us to record our expenditures in Fund 40 there. Food service fund, Fund 50, that is where we operate our food service audit. Food service is not allowed to go into the negative. It is able to have a fund balance. So anytime if we do not collect enough revenues versus our expenditures, we need to take that money out of Fund 10, where our general instruction is, to help fund our food service program. Community service fund, our Fund 80, that is things that are pretty much offered to the community that's through the district. Part of our swim pool, our aquatic center is funded through Fund 80. And then if we partner with other school districts, or if we're the fiscal agent for other surrounding school districts, so for example, Dane County School to Work, we're their fiscal agent, so we run everything through the Cooperative Program Fund, the Fund 99 area. And that's because it's not generally affecting our budget, and we're just being the fiscal agent, and we're running the revenues and expenditures through our accounting system, and then we report back out to those schools. So general fund, this is our, like I said, our major fund. And what we're looking at is, I'll explain this chart. As you go through each of the handouts, and if you saw it was published in the newspaper, we're required, this is the format that DPI requires us to publish. So it's very high level. The first two columns, the first column is actually 2012, 13 actuals that were physically audited. 2013, 14 is, our fiscal year has ended as of June 30th, so those are the numbers that are going through the audit as we speak. And then our budget. So it does become a little confusing when we're looking at actuals versus budget, but what we'll be looking at tonight is the third column, which is the budget side. So we're pretty much looking at a balanced budget. There's a little difference in the revenues and the expenditures, and that's because we really don't know what our enrollment's gonna be. We don't wanna overallocate our expenditures if we see, if we're expecting 35 new students and those 35 students don't come out. There was about a difference of about $100,000. And so what that does is that gives us the flexibility to get back. And if, and then what happens is when, if there's any additional funding, we look at, is it additional teachers? Do we reallocate some of that remaining funds out to our buildings to put in the classroom? The key of our budget is that we want to be able to utilize those resources to get into the classroom as soon as possible. We don't want, I mean, obviously, there are certain things that we have to provide as utilities, and we have transportation, we have cleaners and custodial. But the key of it is, is we wanna take as much of the money that we have and push it into the classroom and hire our teachers, attract and retain, which our superintendent talked about. So what does consist of our general fund? How did we come up with that? Well, the reason that we came up with the $34 million is that we're looking at that increase of $75 per pupil on the revenue limit. We're also seeing $150 per pupil on categorical aid that's coming into the district. That is categorical aid that we can use in any way that we want. There are some categorical aids that we have to specifically use on certain things, such as special education category, that must stay with our special ed students. We're projecting an increase of 23 resident students. We also have an increase of 61 open enrollment students. And then there's also an increase of $100 that is going along with those open enrollment students. So we'll walk through how we came up with each of those. So one of the, one of the bigger parts of our budget is the local sources, which is primarily made up of our property taxes. So when we're looking at this, we're looking at about $19,120,000 that's coming in through local sources, which would be our property taxes. Then Source 240, which are payments for services, at $67,500. And that's where we would have our program for buy a bus seat and open enrollment transportation. We have $2,000 budgeted for our non-capital sales. That would be for resale of equipment, or if we are selling a science-specific equipment to a student, we would record that in this area. Source 270, which is our school activity income, which is 67,000, I'm sorry. So $67,500 is our athletic passes and our athletic event emissions. We're looking at $42,000 through investments, on our interest in investments. And then we do have other revenues, which would consist of rental of our Maywood building, student fees and fines. And so that's totaling our $19 million in the local source side of things. Then we also are anticipating receiving $2,250,000 through open enrollment revenue from other school districts. So based on the number of open enrollment students coming in, we're billing that out to other districts, and then we're collecting that revenue. And so we're anticipating that $2,250,000. On the state side, this is where we're gonna find that categorical aid. This is where we're gonna find our equalization aid. We're looking at $12,103,000. Of that state categorical aid will be $604,000, and our state aid, general aid payment is gonna be that $10,624,000. And that is an estimated increase over last year of about $486,000. We'll move on to federal sources. So this is where we would receive Title 1, Title 2D, any type of coordinated early intervening services that come through, ID flow through, that's moved out of special education into the intervention side of things in Fund 10, and we're looking at about $395,000 there. And then our other revenue is $100,000. Well, when you look at the past history, there's also a lot of things that get accounted there because of our GASB reporting and why we need to report certain things. So we're anticipating $100,000. As things get coded there, we also ultimately increase our expenditure. So it's not like we just keep adding money to that. And so areas that would be like E-rate, credit vouchers that we receive from the prior years, because once we close the books as of June 30th, everything needs to be accounted for in the next fiscal year. So now we're gonna look at the general fund expenditure. So we're looking at a general expenditure budget of $34,578,497. This is broken down into three main areas: instruction, support services, and other programs, or nonprograms. So what we're looking at, as you can see, a majority of our budget goes into the instructional side. We're looking at $17,456,000 going in there. And that's for the direct instruction of our students. So that's where we're seeing our salaries and benefits for our teachers, our paraprofessionals. We're also seeing building supplies that go into the classroom, pre-culum workshops. Those are the types of things that are going into this area. Our support services of $12,734,615 is non-instructional staff. So that would be district administration, clerical, custodial salaries and benefits, all of our utilities, our custodial contracted out, our transportation, and any types of leases that we have on our copiers or anything that don't directly go into the classroom. Then our nonprograms are 400,000 functions. We're looking at 4.3. What that consists of is when we do not receive enough state aid to fund our Fund 27, our special education program. So the district is required to transfer money from our Fund 10 over to special education. And this is also where we would pay for our students that are leaving us to other school districts, and so that's what's coming out of there. So when we talk about how are we using the funds, obviously, there are multiple different ways. The key of it is, is that salary and benefits is the majority of our district's budget. Then we have purchases services, which would be our transportation, utilities, any professional contracts that we might utilize. Non-capital objects would be supplies, supplies specifically that go into classrooms, such as workbooks, textbooks. We have capital objects, which would be our equipment. So when we purchase lawn mowers, or we're purchasing computers, this is the area that we're looking at. Debt retirement, this would be our capital lease payments when we talk about the general fund side of things. Our insurance, this is where we talk about liability, workers' comp, and property. Health insurance, dental insurance falls off under the salary and benefit side of things. Transfers, if we need to transfer to the food service, or, and when we do transfer to special education. And then other objects would be our district dues, fees, and prior year expenditures. So that is a very quick synopsis of our Fund 10, our major operating budget side of things. But then we'll talk about special project funds. So this is really made up of our Fund 27. So when we're looking at this, we're looking at about a $5,465,000 budget. And this budget has to be balanced at the time of doing this, because any special education money that we don't receive comes from our general fund. So when we combine those two, Fund 10 and Fund 27 together, because that's the majority of where our, when we talk about instruction, where our funding is going to, you can see where the revenue's coming in, that we're really seeing on the local revenue side is 50% of our general fund and our Fund 27 is coming from local sources, followed by our state sources of 33%. But then when you look at it on the expenditure side, 74% of our budget goes into salary and benefits. Obviously, it's a great way to spend our money. That's what, helping our students achieve their goals, that's what the district's about. One of the things that, you know, a lot of times, school districts will hear is that we need to run our business, our school district like a business. And on the operational side of things, for the most part, we do that. When we're looking at utilities, making sure that we're looking at energy efficiencies. But the biggest difference between private sector and public sector is the raw materials that are coming into the loading dock or the front doors. Our raw materials are our students. We don't turn them away. So what we're looking at is we need to attract and retain those high-quality staff, and that's why the district's committed to that 74% on salary and benefits. Moving into debt service, this is our Fund 38 and Fund 39. We're looking at a budgeted amount of $5,518,000 on the expenditure side. The revenue side is a little different, and the reason that's a little different is because of the two ways that the calendar year and the fiscal year work. Our revenue limit works based on calendar year, so that's when your property taxes come. For 15, that's paying for calendar year 15. However, our fiscal year runs over 14, 15, so that's why it's a little different. So as we work through each of those years of payment, there's a fund balance that's either developing or shrinking, and then when all the payments are done, then that fund balance is zeroed out. But it also gives the district some ability. So if there's a year where we potentially are gonna see a large spike in property taxes because we say had a bad year with property values that they decreased, we can also decrease the amount that we're levying for our debt service and utilize some of that fund balance. So it gives the district the ability to try to level out where our property taxes are at. So this is just a quick graph. There's more detail in your handout on each year, how much the actual dollar amount is. Over the last three years, the district's worked very hard and taken advantage of the lower interest rates, and we've actually refinanced a number of times, actually resulting in over a million dollars of savings that ultimately doesn't go to the district, it gets passed along to our property taxpayers. So you'll see in Fund 38, and the reason this num, you know, it looks like there's a big spike in the middle. So when we're issuing debts, we're also looking at Fund 39 debts. And so we're not, so when there's a valley, we wanna try to issue it at that time, so there's all, it's more plateau, it's not large spikes, mountains and valleys for everybody. What this is doing, and this is paying for our Phase 1, our Phase 2, and our Phase 3 of our energy projects. The district has been committed to making sure that we move into having buildings that are up to date, and that's one thing that our district is very committed to, is making sure that our, the environment that our students are gonna learn in is up to date, comfortable. So that takes one less thing for our students to have to deal with. Fund 39, you will see that Fund 39, which is our referendum approved debt, is anticipated to be done in 2026, where Fund 39 is 2034. So if you were to combine both of those, our last debt service, if we were not to issue any other debt, would be in the year 2034. So capital project fund. You'll see right now, we have no plans for any additional capital projects in Phase 4 at this point. So you'll see over the last two years, we have had some major activity in this fund. However, this one here is that Phase 3 is still carrying over. We're finishing some things. We're finishing some windows in this building. We're still upgrading some generators. We're finishing our major project at the Cottage Grove Elementary School of Air Conditioning. So what we'll finish out here is this $5,651,000, and that will finish out our payment for Phase 3. Food service funds, we always go into the year with a balanced budget, saying that we're gonna collect the right amounts of revenue versus our expenditures. There are a lot of things that change. The district did see a increase in our food service meal prices that we pass along to our families. That wasn't a choice of the district, because when you look at how much money we put into our fund balance, federal government requires us to analyze that and make sure that the amount that we're charging our families meets the same amount that we're getting reimbursed for our free and reduced. So we have to go through that process each year. So what we're looking at on the food service side of things is $1,280,000 coming in for our revenue and our expenditures. Fund 73, this is our retirement trust. Back in 2008, the district set up a trust fund to help do post-employment health and dental insurance. Part of that was, was that as healthcare continues to increase, retirees have a package that allows them to stay on health insurance for a number of years. And so the trust allowed the district to set some money aside, but still be able to collect equalized aid from that. So that's what those, this trust was set up for. It is a requirement of the district to report out at our annual meeting of the balance of it. Right now, we're looking at $1,221,000. Currently, our retirement package that we're doing is we do as a pay as we go. We're not allowed to touch this until we get to a certain percentage of our actual ARL. One of the major things that the district's looking at right now is teacher retirement, and so those things might change as well. But we started the year with $1,138,000, and based on the deposits and the withdrawals, and you might say, well, you're not, if you're not supposed to be using it, why is there some activity? Well, we're required to, since we do the pay as we go concept, we're required to run it through the trust, and we're required to leave 5% additional in the trust. And so that's how you slowly build that trust over time. So based on the deposits that we're So based on the deposits that we made in, pulled out to make the payments for health and dental insurance, and then the interest that we received, we have a remaining balance of $1,221,000. Our community service funds, this is a fund that the board is able to have some flexibility on when it came to levying. However, in the last state budget, some of that power has been taken away. We're now prevented from increasing our levy. We can only go to what we've levied the previous year. And so this is how we sort of spend our, our money in community service. We have personnel that for the facility use, so when we ask our custodians to work on Saturdays and Sundays to open up our buildings for communities to come in. We have great partnerships with the city of Manona, the Village of Cottage Grove to utilize our gems, but when we have community groups that would like to use this, and obviously, this facility is a great building room to use for our community, and now that it's been completed, obviously, this will be an area that will really be going out and trying to attract more individuals to do. Our community-based pool, our aquatic center that's located at the high school is a large portion of this. We don't put everything here. Obviously, we're on, we're not allowed to do that. 60% of our expenditures really run through Fund 80 for our aquatic center, because 40% is going to support FIAID, going to support our swim team, and those are school-sponsored activities. We have the auditorium. Right now, that's a small portion of that. One of the things that we want, we're going to be working through in the next course of the year is how can we make that more of a viable area to be utilized in the surrounding area. We have the city of Manona Partnership, where we talked about the school resource officer, and so, and then we also have our media personnel and supply, so being able to commit, to videotape and have our board meetings and our activities published on the Manona Cable Channel and also on the Cottage Grove Cable Channel. So we're looking at about $315,000 on this one, and not all of it is passed along to property tax. We do charge fees for some of our programs. This one here is our cooperative program funds, and like I had said before, we are the fiscal agent for Dane County School to work. So since it's part of our budget, but it doesn't have any direct impact on our general fund, I'm required to report out. So what we've run through there is about $344,000. So all their revenues are booked through the business office, and all their expenditures are run through our PO system. So when we look at this entire summary, we're looking at about 2.12% increase in our total expenditures from last year's actual to this year's budgets. So when we look at, we have about $49,513,000 on our total expenditures that we're anticipating for this year. So when we break that down to the proposed property tax, how that works is $19,120,000 is going to general funds, and that's primary for our enrollments and the $75 increase versus what we're not receiving from state aid. Then we have our referendum debt service of the $5,109,000. We have our non-referendum debt, which is $615,000. Now, the key of that is that's not outside of our revenue, so if we did not have Fund 38, that $615,000 would have been pushed back up to the general fund side of things, but we do break it out so individuals see where that money's going. We do not have a capital expansion fund at this time. And then our community service fund is, we are levying the same amount that we did last year, and that's the $245,240. So when we combine all that, we are looking at an increase in our property tax levy of about 2.04%. So then how does that get to our meal rate? So that's really when property taxpayers are looking at, how much is that going to cost me on my, on my property tax bill? We're looking at $14 per thousand dollars of property value owed. Now, that's prior to any first dollar credit or school credit that comes through, and each municipality's done a little differently. But if you wanted to get a quick estimate, if you just took your home value divided by 1,000 and times it by $14, that will show you. And as you can see, there has been some changes. Part of that is, is when we issue debt, that goes into play with that, and we have issued some debt for our Fund 38. So when we look at the overall impact on the property owners, if we looked at a $200,000 valued house, we look at about an increase of $30 over last year, and that would break down to about $2.50 per month. Now, this is before any property tax credits or first child, first dollar credits are applied to your property tax bill, but the other part, this also could, it could change dramatically based on the property valuations that come in, and then also our enrollment that comes in from the states. And so like I just had said, you know, the revenue limit, the revenue cap, state aid, and overall tax levy are subject to change. All that will be taken care of at the end of the month by the Board of Education. So what we're looking for right now is our final membership count, the third Friday counts. We're looking for our equalized property value, and then our certification of total state aid from the states. And how will those work? Obviously, today, October 1st, is the Department of Revenue will release those values to us. On the 15th, the states will release state aid calculations, and then on October 22nd, the board will take official action to set the levy and adopt the budget for the 2014-15 school year. So this concludes the budget hearing portions, and I'm more than happy to answer any questions. And as, oh, sorry, Joe.
Is there a way that if we wanted to see a comparison from the previous year that we?
Yes.
Pick it up at all and to see what the trend might be over the last, previous two budgets, or it may be.
Yes, I'm more than happy to sit down with anybody that wants to go and we can talk in detail and also provide you some detailed information.
Thanks. And well, and relative to that, for, I don't know if you can remember, where have you seen the largest comparable increases coming? Theoretically, with the Act 10, we were given so many good tools to lower all of these things.
Right.
Did in fact, did that occur, that we saw significant savings or adjustments that we could do, or that for those of us who are not having to face all of that all the time, just hearing the sound bites that as a property owner, you're going to see great things happen. Do they happen?
Well, I mean, obviously, with Act 10, the district only now pays half of the WRI side of it, and the district employees are required to contribute a portion of it. I don't necessarily want to call it a tool or there's any savings. We were in a mode of doing budget reductions, and prior to that, we were at 1.2 million. However, this year, we've been able to utilize some of those things and add staff in the classroom. We had reading teachers, added high school teachers to be able to assist with some of that class size. So it, not necessarily because what we're seeing is a $75 increase in our revenue. I think each school district benefited or saw losses on Act 10, and that's very unique. However, we were in a situation where we had been seeing reductions and, but it also went on the back of our employees. When they saw that there was, they now have to pay 7% of their WRS, that wasn't something before, so the district is working on alternative compensation plans and ways that we can fix that. So, you know, there are some things that benefited and some things that obviously makes it challenging for the district.
My final question is, in the past, our starting salaries for some of our new teachers in comparison to other districts and conference schools, we were not very stellar at every increasing it so that going back, we can, can contract with the best teachers for our students to achieve some of those, you know, achievement gaps and equity gaps.
And that goes into play with our alternative compensation plan, but we are at, our base starting wage for our teachers are at $38,000 now. So there has been some significant work to increase that.
Thank you. And I appreciate the school board and the district working and looking at that, because I think for most people, they didn't realize how poor our starting teacher salaries were in the district, and over time, it's the pressure and the due diligence and the school board, the problem may have been changed, so I appreciate that.
Other questions? All right. I'll turn it back over to President Susan Fox.
Okay. Then the next item, now to the business part, is the adoption of the tax levy. Is there someone who'd like to make a motion? And when you make a motion on any of these following items, please state your name and address. We need that for the minutes. So would someone care to move adoption of a tax levy? If you want, I can read it for you, and then you can move, uh, just, or do you?
I'm just trying to find the page.
Oh, okay. It's, it's page five.
Yeah, five on the screen.
And it's also up on the screen.
I, Jo Oyama Miller, 4903 Morgan Terrace, Manona, with approval of a tax levy in the amount of $25,009,074 each, which consists of general fund levy in the amount of $90,020,409, Fund 10. A debt service fund levy, tax levy in the amount of $5,109,110,000, Parent Fund 39, in an honor of parent debt obligation of $615,989, Parent Fund 38, and a community service fund tax levy in the amount of $245,240.
Okay, is there a second? We do need a second, okay. Ann?
I, second, the motion.
Okay, Ann Schrader?
4909, Rockland Place, Manona.
So it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Then the next item would be authorization of salaries for school board members. And you'll, there is a note here that the actual salaries for the previous year were $3,062 per board member. Jen?
Yeah, John Wimber, 5504 Healy, Lane, Manona. I move to set the 2014-15 annual school board salaries at $3,000.
Okay, it's been moved. Is there a second for that motion? Yes.
Mary, I have read 5602, Wimber, 7.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded to set the 2014-15 annual salaries of the school board members at $3,000. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
And it's probably, I think, guys have that. Is there abstentions? I believe that motion carried. All right, the next item is reimbursement of school board member-related expenditures, and this is different. This is reimbursement for actual expenditures as opposed to salary. Someone care to make that motion? John?
I have the same person, the same address as last time. With authorized reimbursement of school board member expenses incurred for their performance of their duties.
Is there a second?
Sure, we have another.
Thank you. That's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And the next item is authorization to the school board to sell tangible personal property at a per-item price of not to exceed $2,500. Someone care to make that motion? Joe?
I, Jo Oyama Miller, 4903 Morgan Terrace, Manona, move to authorize the school board to sell surplus tangible personal property having a per-item levy not exceeding $2,500.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And lastly, a motion to authorize the school board to establish the date, time, and place of the 2015 annual meeting, and that's required by statute that we establish that. It'll likely be the same comparable date next year, but if you give us that authorization. So is there a motion? Mary?
I, Mary Hendricks, at 439 Pelican Circle, move to authorize the school board to establish the date, time, and place of the 2015 budget hearing and junior meeting.
Okay, is there a second?
I, Tim Mortensen, of 208 Foster Road, second that motion.
Thank you. So moved and seconded. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And now other business, which really is just if you have any additional questions, or things you'd like us to talk about at future board meetings, perhaps, this would be the time to bring those up. All right, seeing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I, Deb Lyons, of 6103 Bayou Gateway, New Orleans, move back to meeting.
Okay, and a second?
I, Rochelle Miller, 6013 Winnequa Road. I second the motion to adjourn the meeting.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much for coming.